Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, September 23rd, 2020. One, time is now 7:04. If everyone in the audience, if you wanted to discuss anything, if you could just go out in the hallway, we have a very packed agenda tonight, so. First item would be Public Hearing, Town of Douglas Planning Board and Tree Warden. So in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), scenic roads, Chapter 87, public shade tree law, Section 3, Cutting of Public Shade Trees Hearing, Damages, and the Town Douglas General Bylaw, Article 5, Section 6, scenic road bylaw, the Town of Douglas Planning Board and Tree Warden will hold a public hearing for the Town of Douglas to prune and remove trees that are dead or dying, or impede the safety, the safe travel along Oak Street in Douglas. The specific trees to be removed are as follows. Okay, Oak Street Tree Removal List.
It's in here somewhere.
It's right there.
Yeah.
You don't have to read it.
Yep.
Let me just take a look.
So through the chair, I live on Oak Street, but I don't see any reason to recuse myself for this yet.
Okay.
That just has to do with trees.
Unless you're against it. But if you feel comfortable, that's fine, you can stay. Public Hearing is being held on Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the above matter should appear at the time and place designated. So there are various trees. Who is here to present?
Mr. John.
Oh, hi.
Hello.
Do you have a plan or a map, or do you want to come?
I don't have a map. It's written, as in your agenda, each tree is marked out on Oak Street.
Okay.
There's approximately 30 trees that are in failing health that we're afraid that are going to eventually fall if we don't take them down due to the gypsy moth caterpillars of about four years ago. So there's several trees that need pruning along the beginning of Oak Street up to there where Mobile Pipeline is roughly.
Okay.
We'll cut the trees, get them to the ground, the wood is left there for the homeowners that want the wood, those that don't will contact me and we'll get it taken away.
Okay, and you've been through Conservation? That was approved last time?
I just got to send something to Steve.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
This funding is hopefully coming in the Fall Town Meeting, so it's going to be a little bit before we get to it, but this is our first step in the process.
Okay, so 30 trees in total to be trimmed or removed and then stump in place?
Thirty removed and several trimmed.
Okay. Do you have anything on this one? Okay. Um, board, Les, anything?
No, pretty cut and dry.
Safety, safety, safety.
Yeah.
Safety.
Please take them down.
Okay.
Because when you drive down the street, you look up, you don't look down.
To the chair.
It's a suicide going through the chair.
I know.
Back home moving.
I know. We gotta get through.
Through the chair.
That counts. That counts. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience questions, concerns on this hearing? Anyone remote? Oh, oh, I didn't see you. Name and address for the record, please.
Carol Row, 33 Parker Road. We own property on Oak Street. So questions, you've already said how many are coming down. Is the town going, the Highway Department doing it, or who's doing it?
John, you want to answer that?
Yep, so we assist a contractor, a subcontractor. Either it'll be Gold Tree out of Milbury or Northeastern Tree out of Cranston or that.
And when's it going to start?
Well, I'm going to the Fall Town Meeting for the funding, and hopefully over the winter, if things go good, we have a mild enough percentage.
Not next week.
Not at all.
And what are the permits for cleanup?
Well, we'll clean up, we chip all the brush, we leave the firewood for, most homeowners want it. I ask homeowners if they don't want it to put a free sign on it, and if no one takes it away, we will come clean it up.
That's it? Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else online?
Nope. Good.
Okay. Board, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'll make. What is it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Close the hearing?
Close the public hearing. We're going to close the hearing.
Oh, all right, yeah. Yeah, it's a public hearing, right? Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Ernie, seconded by Jake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, now, I'll entertain a motion.
Approve the tree cutting on the scenic road of Oak Street.
I'll second that.
Motion's made by Ernie, seconded by Mike Z. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Is Bob Pace here for the Whitein Reservoir Estates Written Report and Update on Roadwork? Is Jude here?
I haven't seen Jude.
No.
Where is that one?
It's an additional business.
Are you hot? Are you hot? You're scumming.
Just trying to wait here.
No.
Oh, yeah. Do you have an update?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess Eve has an update on that.
What? I just wanted to let everyone know.
Whitein Reservoir Estates.
No, not from Reservoir Estates.
Them doing a.
Okay, sorry.
Which one do you want to do?
I had, I, it's not in the agenda.
Oh. Oh, okay, yeah, sure, go ahead.
The town has hired a new planner.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone knows?
Yep.
Oh, okay, then it's not, I thought perhaps he was going.
Heard a rumor.
I thought at some point Matt Wojcik told me he might appear via Zoom to just introduce himself, but I believe he should, I don't see him up there.
No.
Speak now. But he, I believe, will be here.
October.
At the next planning board meeting, which is the 14th, he will have started that week. I will still be here until about Thanksgiving to try to ease the transition and make sure that we get a couple of things done in a timely manner, but I think he'll be very happy.
Is he starting, starting the 11th or the 14th, 18th?
He's, I think he's starting the week, so your meeting is the 14th, which is a Thursday, so he's starting that week.
Yeah.
I don't exactly know which day.
Through the chair, this is a planner, right, not an engineer?
Yes, he is, he is a planner.
Okay.
He has a lot of experience with subdivisions and with other, with doing inspections and the like, but he is not.
Amphascia, drainage.
He's, he was also in energy, clean energy.
Yep.
Green energy.
Solar, yep.
So he's done a lot of that, but he is not an engineer. So I believe, and what we've been doing while I've been here, is to get a peer review outside, third-party engineering firm to do the peer reviews. That will continue.
Okay.
And how that works process-wise, I'm not sure.
Yep.
Matt, and his name is Matthew. So I don't know, I think, I'm not sure how you're going to be able to tell the difference, but.
Through the chair. Where's he from, what town? Did he work?
Natick. He's currently out of Natick, and he worked.
He lives in Auburn.
Lives in Auburn, but worked in Auburn as well.
He's the Natick guy?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, he's pretty.
He lives in Auburn, and he worked in Auburn, and then he went to Natick recently, and.
How long was he in Natick?
He was only in Natick for six months.
Oh.
Hold on.
Yep.
He was not necessarily looking for a job, but I happen to know that he was in Natick and that he lived in Auburn, and I think one of the issues in finding people to work here is they don't, A, know where Douglas is, or it's a terrible commute. So I needed to, we want to, I kind of reached out to him and said, do you know anybody in Central Mass?
I go to Natick two, three times a week.
Yeah.
So anyhow, he lives in Auburn, so that's good, because the commute was not a problem for him.
Yeah.
And I believe he was at the Selectman's Meeting on Tuesday.
He was.
Tuesday.
Yes, he was.
Okay. So.
Yep.
Does that come on?
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate that. I'm just getting to the page, so the 14. Yeah, we've already got something at 8 o'clock on that day, too.
Can I?
Yeah, sure.
Aaron, one other addition, he was not the director in Natick.
I know he wasn't.
So.
I know Natick.
Okay, so this is a good step up for him, and it's in the community that he knows about and likes.
Okay, thank you very much, Eve.
Yeah, thank you.
We should be on our way for 2022.
Yep.
So next item on the agenda, 7:15 PM, public hearing continued. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for a special permit definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms. They did request a continuance to October 28th at 7:00 PM. They are finalizing, will be submitting by the end of this week, 9:24. How many times has this been continued?
A record.
A few.
A record.
I don't know.
It's a new hearing, though.
Was that a brand?
They withdrew, and then recently it started a new hearing.
Yeah, how many times have we continued?
It was the first.
This new hearing.
It was the first one I was.
Last time?
It was, no, it was in July, it was my first hearing. My first meeting was, they were here.
Okay, so.
With their new submit.
Yeah, so if they do not submit something tomorrow, would you, would you like to do anything? You want to still keep them on the 28th? Let me just see.
Through the chair, yeah, through the chair.
I don't have a problem with.
Okay.
So through the chair, I just have a problem with the fact that we haven't seen anything from them in, feeling close to a year or so of substance.
They were on August 20, August 26th.
This is the.
And.
Hawk Hill.
July 22nd.
I mean, I know we've had audience members in here, and then we have to tell them it was continued.
So it was two continuances?
I don't know if we have audience members tonight for this project, and then it's continued again with no update.
So I think we've got a, if we could send Jude, are you working tomorrow? Send Jude an email that we need it tomorrow.
Through the chair, you're making, excuse me, you're making a point that the public comes, and they can cancel it. It's a real burden to whoever wants to interface with this process.
Them and, as well as the board, I mean, like.
Well, we, yeah, we have a spot for them.
We've, we've kind of kicked this, I don't know, Mike, and I mean, you guys, what you guys feel, but it's been kicked around for quite a while.
And did we already vote to put this out to peer review?
So, yeah, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
We did that originally. Where we are at the moment is that we, they, the board asked them to make a few changes before it went to the peer review so that we could get it to the peer review. We have, we have a peer reviewer all set up to do it. They have not submitted anything.
They haven't submitted.
They have submitted anything with the changes that were asked in order to send it to the peer review. So we have a peer reviewer all set up for it, but we do not have any plans. That's what I believe he said he was going to give us by the end of the week. Then, that's why he asked to be on the 28th and not on the 14th, because he figures, the engineer figured that that would give enough time for our peer reviewer to look at it, and then to have some back and forth perhaps, and then they would be ready to go back to the board on the 28th.
Okay.
That's where we are.
And if I came through the chair, I know there were a couple of major things that were sticking points, was their butter in the driveway with the eight feet, or six feet, not 30 feet, back in the day. They were examining about the water, talking about across the street, talking about land lock, the property in the back.
Right.
So they had a lot of, they have a lot of stuff that needs to be hammered out with neighbors and the butters and all that, I think, possibly before they're coming back here, maybe that's why. It'd be nice to hear from them, that, but there was a lot of stuff we threw at them before.
You're right, you asked them for.
We threw a lot of stuff out there to hammer out.
You asked them for some changes or some, to make some additional work on the plans before the peer reviewer looked at it, and we have not, in the two months.
We anticipated, yeah.
We haven't gotten.
I'm going to say it's five weeks from now, the 28th, is that right, about that?
Yeah.
That, I think they have to get this to the peer review at reasonable time.
Well, tomorrow.
Yes.
Is what they're saying, so.
Peer review needs to have the time to review, and.
And we will, yeah, we'll have a meeting before they're on for the next one, but I think.
People on the 28th, and then that's, that's it.
Okay.
Let's see.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to continue to October 28th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Jake made the motion, Ernie seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay.
One, you're not wrong.
All right. For the record, the last is nay.
Me.
One nay from Les Stevens.
Just me.
Now they're requesting the all seven.
Can we ask in the audience?
What? I'm going to just do the next thing at 7:20?
Okay.
Not continuing.
Not continuing them. Can we see if anybody in the audience was here for that?
But you heard what we said, that you guys were making.
Already continued.
Just a quick question, now, when that gets submitted, is that anything that we can see?
Should be available electronically, and.
If there is an easement, or there is something on the plans, at least that way I know that that.
How are we working on the website?
Can we reach out to the engineer?
Links for electronic, for electronic dealing?
Once it comes into the office and has public information.
Okay. Can we do cover projects?
Can we put him in the minutes, make sure his name is here in the minutes that he's asking?
Cover projects, and then link.
We really shouldn't take any of the audience, because it's a public hearing that's being continued, so. Even if he asks a question.
No.
You can put it in the meeting.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can call and ask for Jen, and she'll get you the copies, either hard copy or electronic, to your email.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Aaron, we'd like you, that they were put in, put in the meeting minutes that they attended and that.
Okay, what's your name and address?
Travis McCullough, and I own the property, the 40 acres, that's labeled parcel 124-3.
Okay.
That's the landlord.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. 7:20 PM, A&R Plan, JMT Sleepy Hollow, James Pine, Northeast Main Street, and Joseph Road, possible votes.
She's online.
Um, one moment, please. John? Can't hardly see that. So staff reviewed this?
I did look at it.
Do you want to just give us a little overview?
Yes. I did look at it, I had a conversation with the engineer. I was trying to ascertain what this was supposed, why they were doing this. They just, well, the engineer will show you, but they just drew a line, there used to be a backwards L-shaped lot, and they now made it one long lot, and then the back, the L part of it, the backwards L part of it is a separate lot. It does say on it that it's not a buildable lot. My understanding is that Mr. Pine would like to sell that to one of the butters. I'm not exactly sure which one. I don't know why it wasn't shown to go, to, you know, join in with the one that they're, it just, but it does say not a buildable lot, because it has no frontage and is not large enough. The engineer also did tell me that it's unlikely that they could fit a house in the envelope, the building envelope, for the long piece that they are keeping, that there's some, I believe there's some wetlands on the bottom, and it's got two front setbacks, so it's a little bit. So I don't know that that one's going to be built on either, so I don't know, that might be why. I did ask the engineer, when I spoke to him, if perhaps we could get an answer to that question, if the board actually cares, but as long as it says it's not a buildable lot by itself, I think they're just drawing the line.
Okay, John, name and address if you want to just walk us through the plan request.
Sure.
Please.
So John Federico with Berry Iron Almond, representing James Pine and the applicant of Sleepy Hollow, JMT Sleepy Hollow, sorry about that. So for what we're trying to propose to do here, Mr. Pine has a very good relationship with Mr. Micello, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and essentially, all Mr. Pine wants to do is just sell off that rear portion of Lot 24. I believe in the assessors, it's listed as 71.3, and essentially, he's just offering that to Mr. Micello, so that they don't have any sort of future development there. From my understanding of everything, going through Conservation on some of the other lots, they do already have maxed out or pretty close to it for any sort of disturbances to the riverfront area, so that portion of the lot wouldn't really be disturbed in any sort of way, shape, or form moving forward. In terms of how the subdivision was originally broken out, the building setback lines did form a point just outside of the 200-foot riverfront area on the original Lot 24. So in terms of any sort of buildability for that lot, nothing will be changing, and in terms of the zoning regs for the subdivision, that lot does still remain in compliance. I was able to touch base with Mr. Pine regarding what the intent is for Lot 24, and currently that portion is in the works with a building company. They will be looking to have a small footprint or an elongated footprint to be used on that lot, but that is something that is in development in the future. As far as what we're proposing here, essentially, we were just looking for a very clean way of just providing a little extra land for the abutter, and just make it, like I mentioned, ensure that no development could possibly occur there, and, you know, natural vegetation remains as much as possible in the area.
So you're creating two lots, two new parks, two new lots, one is a.
Which would just be absorbed into Mr. Micello's piece.
Not exactly.
And again, that wouldn't be anything that he's even attempting to develop on his own, this just, he has the land so that, you know, it can remain natural feature out there.
Yep, no problem.
Can I ask, why is it not just, instead of parcel A, not a building lot, why wouldn't it, while you're doing the A&R, why wouldn't you just connect it to?
Combine it.
Combine it now? So that you would end up with two, you'd have two lots, they would just be, instead of three lots, you'd have two lots, just different, different shapes? Why is, why are they not being combined now?
Way of putting non-buildable, just.
Right, then you wouldn't have to put.
Combine it, right.
I believe it would just be, because it's going to be a parcel sold off, and I guess, I'm not sure of the act from, you know, workings, if it was just to be transferred or anything along those lines.
Okay, so we're, we have one buildable lot being formed and one unbuildable lot, right?
I have already one buildable.
One buildable lot.
It's already a buildable lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Modifying the buildable.
Okay.
But we.
Would we be able to use Bill's old check sheet for A&Rs? So taxes paid, there's just like a list of things shown on the plans that, I have one, if you need me to email it to you. That one was helpful, because we would just scan through it, because approval not required, you know, we just want to make sure that it has all the statutory requirements on it, and that list, pretty much, has.
We, through the chair, I don't think we're approving an A&R on the modified, new proposed A&R, and we don't really care about this left over, right? I mean, as long as the A&R is developed as its whole piece with the checklist, we're not approving this, you know, non-buildable lot, it's not really, that's not our jurisdiction, right, to approve a non-buildable lot, what do we care? I mean, I'm just, help me out, because I'm just trying to help.
Approval not required means that it meets all the requirements.
Right, of the lot that's being reduced to maintain the A&R. So what do we care about this residual? We really don't.
Well, we want to make sure it's noted correctly on the plan.
Right, and it should say.
Because we don't override anything on zoning.
Yeah, not buildable.
But there's nothing, other than it's being noted correctly, there's nothing that we care about the dimensions that are left over on something he's going to convey later.
Yeah, we don't know, though. We just want to make sure we go through the correct.
Right, right.
Just going to worry about what's on front end, that's it.
Yeah.
Right, and we agree with that, yeah. And through the chair, make sure whatever parcel that's left over is on the plan stamped as not a buildable lot. Correct.
Yeah, and the plan references, the book and page, somebody, somebody checked the plan books on all these?
But it's not referenced.
On all the notes?
No, I did not do that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did, I did look at the file for the subdivision that created these in the first place, to make sure that there wasn't something that said you can't further subdivide any of these, or, and so it does.
Yeah, because the road's not accepted yet.
Right, it, it does comply with the original subdivision.
Conditions.
Something, yes.
Okay.
That I did check, I didn't check the, sorry.
No, that's okay, there's.
Just through the chair, that there's, there's six plans that are filed, that are registered deeds, and, yeah, we'd have to check all six of those, but it looks, looks like it's in order from the engineering company, I can tell what they submitted.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
I'll make a motion to endorse A&R Plan for JMT Sleepy Hollow, Northwest Main Street, and Joseph Road.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all set, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can pick up the bylaw.
Apologies if I did create any additional confusion or anything.
That's okay.
Appreciate you guys being able to prove this.
No problem.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Process, you're going to sign it tonight, right?
Yeah, after the meeting.
At the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, staying on task, 7:30 PM, public hearing continued, Pine Sand and Stone Company, applications for an earth removal special permit and a water resource protection overlay district special permit, 39 West Street. They have requested a continuance to October 14th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
I'll make a motion.
Two. To?
To continue their earth removal permit for 39 West Street to October 14th at 7:00 PM.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all set.
We've got time.
So let's take it from the top on additional business and then we'll just cut it off in 15 minutes.
So just through the chair on the first item on the additional business. Mr. Pace was at the selectmen meeting, so I know a little bit about this one and Mike was in the audience.
Yeah, if I could just see if someone's representing him on the written report and update.
I think he planned on being here tonight, so.
Okay, so maybe we can table that if we haven't heard anything. Do we have anything in our packet for the written report? Oh, there's no written, oh, I thought there was a written report. Okay. Subdivision monuments.
Okay, great.
So unless we can take that away.
So, second item on the additional business, the monuments. So just to update the board as well as our minutes, so the Byron Andrews, Andrews Engineering did install 28 bounds in the December timeframe for Shady Knolls Estates. There was a second town meeting in October that was for Preservation Drive, which was for 28 bounds as well. That money has been set aside by Gene and according to town administrator, I don't think we have to go out to another bid process is what he stated in the meeting. So if we're happy with the work, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that we would hold back until the new planner is in place because, so planners involve when they come aboard in October so we can get that work done. For the town meeting on November 8th, it is, for 2021, I'd like to request, we submitted a request through the board of selectmen for $25,000 towards monuments. We were asked to designate a few subdivisions for that amount of money. And what I would recommend for this board is that we look at Colonial Estates and Spring Meadow Estates because they abut each other and they're on North Street.
Okay. Was that decision already made yet?
Nope. I just, Gene wanted a, they wanted our opinion after this meeting and.
You want a formal vote on that recommendation? Yes?
I have one thing through the chair. Are we getting the final set of prints that's showing where all these bounds markers are?
No, so the approved subdivision has them on.
Supposed to have, that's what I'm saying. So.
They're putting them where?
They're supposed to have it on.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're putting them where the plan shows.
Now, is that a known fact? Were they all checked to make sure?
Well, we're giving them the plans, the recorded plan.
I haven't seen the plan.
So, just through the chair, what, what I would hope is, is when our new planner comes aboard, that we could sit down with him as well as Andrews who did the last subdivision before they start the next one, to talk about, hey, what bounds were installed in Shady Knolls? Which ones do you plan on doing in Preservation? And can we go forward from there?
Okay, since they're not doing all the bounds in every, in the subdivision.
Just so that we know what's.
There wasn't enough to cover.
So we can have a plan and then they can highlight or, for the record.
Right.
And then we can just scan it in because that's how they're doing it now. So Andrews will need to provide us with a plan of where they've been, yeah, what they've done.
What they checked out. Again, when the new planner is aboard, we can, we can circle back with.
Well, that way there, somebody comes into the town says, hey, there's supposed to be a marker here.
Yep.
They can pull out a print and say, okay, yes.
There's a couple, yeah.
Right now, we're assuming the markers are where they're supposed to be.
So, just through the chair, that was another discussion point that came up at the selectmen meeting and Mike was in the audience. You know, the question keeps on coming with the, I met with the finance committee as well. I know, for example, let's just, just talk about one subdivision, let's say Brookside Drives, got, the plan shows 22 bounds to be installed. I know there's pins along the road and things like that. What would be the appetite of the sport or the thought on it if, for, let's say, just Brookside, for example, 22 bounds, are we looking at for our, where we would be satisfied? Are we looking at doing 100% on everything in, on these lists? Or are we looking at a, a certain percentage in these subdivisions? Because the selectmen have asked, kind of like in, finance has asked, and I'm like, it's really what, what does the board want to do?
Through the chair, that's what I'm asking. If there are set prints that show where they're supposed to be, and if there is, then we should go off what's on the prints.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. That's what I want to find out is, are we going off prints that already have them on? Or extras being added above and beyond?
No, 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 just what's being shown on the plan is what Bill's documented here. I just want to know, because sometimes, you have a line of sight and maybe you don't have to do every single one. I'm hoping with our new town planner comes aboard, what, what we were asked at the selectmen meeting was to have that conversation with the new town planner as well as the contractor to coming in to do the bounds, to say, come up with a game plan to say, maybe everyone is not needed and maybe there's.
Correct. And that's why there, again, if that's being done, then a new print needs to be made to show.
Yep, an updated file. Okay.
Yeah.
And what it is, right?
That's why.
Maybe it's a pin and a rod.
I don't, I don't know if we necessarily need every one of them because, I mean, once you get a few, when they, people can shoot.
The town's going to get a product coming to be able to do it from that point, 100%.
So, yeah, so that's the thing. So if we keep being successfully awarded the money, so what other projects, so we, should we be looking for instead of using all of our money, you know, to do every single? Because once they move on, they shouldn't go back to that subdivision.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
But maybe we need something else, maybe we need to look at something else that we can do that would be useful for planning in the town with the money.
I think our priority should be the ones that have none at all. They'll be, at least get some in each one of those developments so that people have a reference point to do with something if they want to.
That's Fairfax East Development.
Well.
Has zero, right?
Correct. That was long ago.
And that looks like, like a small change at 68.
Yeah. What, the reason why I went with Colonial Estates and Spring Meadow was because, one, both of those subdivisions, Bill's already kind of walked, walked out there at the time. He was looking at the ones with the red stars on this list, he was still out there to confirm. So I haven't looked at any of those, but I was picking those two projects because, one, they abut each other and it's also twice the amount of money, so putting it towards that. And I thought it would be beneficial because the, whoever's awarded it would be working in that area during that time to do those bounds.
So are they just picking which ones they want to do?
No.
Out of the whole subdivision?
We, 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 they, they probably had a meeting with Bill regarding what they did.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping when Matt, the new town planner, comes aboard, that we have that discussion before.
Yeah, let's make sure we have that discussion.
Before they go on the field.
Right, and I'm going to bring it up through the chair. I want to see, and Bill had it, I know he has it, the print, no. That's one thing. But the prints showing what's going on on each one, and then it's a selectman asks, yeah, here's the prints, here's all the red dots, that's where they're all at, so everybody knows, everybody's on the same page.
I think, I think, you know, if I have a chance next week, I'll swing by Andrews to see what they've got. Because they did work on Shady Knolls Estates and they did 28 bounds, so they know where they placed them all.
Yep.
They did not complete Shady Knolls because Shady Knolls, through the chair, has roughly 69 bounds are needed for that project and they installed 28. But that was the abutter who came in that had the problem that woke us up to it. So we started with that project first.
So we still have a lot more to do there.
Correct, I just was looking to.
If we can get a few on each road off the subdivision.
Yeah, and be thoughtful.
Yep.
And then everybody can think of another project we can do.
Are we, are we in favor of?
Planning, yes.
Colonial Estates and Spring Meadow Estates?
Can I consensus?
Consensus?
That's fine.
Okay.
No objection.
No objection, cool, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do one more. Accessory apartment, request for accessory apartment extension, Ronald Forge at 538 Northwest Main Street.
Yep.
We don't have an application, just one application. Okay. Again, we have a little, this one was a check sheet also from Bill to make sure everything was in order, yeah.
This is just a little.
Does anyone want to look at a copy of the application? This is the, I need this back, this is what, this is the permit.
Oh, we don't have it in that folder?
No.
Sorry.
Actually, I don't even have the application, this is the permit, the extension permit.
Like extension?
Um, to.
Three years.
Three years.
Yeah, August 12th, 2024.
I don't think I have any concerns because it's already existing.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
It was originally approved in 1998.
Yep.
Board, any other questions?
Same, same relatives?
Different, same relative that was there.
Huh?
That renewed it recently.
23 years ago.
Well, not that same relative, the one that was there during his last renewal.
I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
To grant the accessory apartment special permit.
Don't move.
Second that.
Motion's made by Ernie, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll sign that before we leave.
Okay.
Actually, we can sign it now.
Okay.
We have a couple vouchers. Leonard Engineering.
ZBAP.
Or Gilboa Court Extension Inspection. McMahon Associates.
They're doing the peer review for Flying Goose.
Okay, Flying Goose. Thank you for finding, I haven't seen that company before.
We need someone who could do traffic and stormwater at the same.
Fellow Woods. Awesome. And West Street gravel removal.
So just through the chair, there was a question, there was something that, discussion that came up this week regarding peer review. We normally would, we do a peer review, we send it out to the company. Sometimes we don't have them do sections or A to Z through the peer review, like we do, like if we had a concern regarding wetlands or we had a concern regarding traffic. So are we?
Trying to say the scope of the work.
Scope of the work.
We should limit it to what we feel like we should have reviewed. I think with our new town planner, that may be the requirement of expertise for certain things, but since we only have Eve 10 hours or less a week, I think that they need to be in the place of our town planner to check our regulations. I think when Matthew gets here, I think it'll be a different story and then we can talk about traffic or drainage, stormwater, things like that.
And if I can, through the chair, he's not going to take this, you know, have it all set in the first month, it's going to take him a.
Yeah, I mean, studying our regulations.
Well, they're ongoing while here, I think peer review should see anything that's going on in this stuff, period.
As a whole, our regulation as a whole, whatever there's up there to.
Definitely.
I would have to agree.
I want them quitting after the first.
No.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Ernie's going to scare them off.
We're still learning every, every meeting.
Tracy, about, we were just discussing the boundaries.
Yes.
We're doing Shady Knolls and Colonial, whatever ones we pick, when he gets here. Gentlemen, is, we should check and see if there's any bond money in any of these projects?
I think we did.
I doubt that there is, but.
Yeah, I think we used it for sanding.
I like, if we're going to start thinking about doing, we should check and see if there's any bond money left in any of the projects that we're going to do in the future.
All right, so.
There's pretty good records for Maria on, I don't believe anything is left. I think we used it for sand removal and sanding.
So.
Every year.
I mean, we're using up the money for maintenance, but I don't know if there's anything left or not.
So Ernie brings up a valid point and.
Sunset Drive.
And I believe there was one that might have snuck by us that had money in the bond and didn't install the, the bounds. So I believe it was Sunset Drive that was just accepted, you know, a little while ago.
We did use some of that money for catch basin.
Catch basin.
And stuff like that.
But, but didn't realize that we didn't overlook the bond.
How much is in there?
It's gone.
We already approved this.
We approved the road.
For those two, but in the future, if we're going to start doing, we should have them sometime review what we have left of bond money in any projects that we have to work in.
Correct. Yeah, that was one that I think got by us where there was bond money and then we accepted the road and then didn't realize that the bonds, the bounds weren't done.
Yeah.
Okay.
That happens, but, you know, we're, we weren't aware of it at that time, so.
Yep, good to keep track.
Yep, they got by us, got by the selectmen, so.
Okay. Let's give you one second. If we want to start, you can start reviewing until I get the signature pages.
Yeah.
The next item.
Invading my space again.
Is he? Who? I know, he's all spread out, isn't he?
No, he's in my right space.
Oh, is he? Right in his space? Look at that, he's got the whole table to himself. Look at this, you and I can share a table, he can't share.
Start bringing up rocks.
Review this process.
I was at the technical review.
Yep.
I did not have a chance to review.
Yeah, we were together.
Yes.
Was there another one?
Did you check the box with?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's the only, so I, that's all we know about it. I did speak to the engineer today and I think he was supposed to give you an overview, preview.
Yeah, because I think that is, the preliminary subdivision plan has to be approved before.
This is pretty flat out. Got to go to the back of that, towards the back is where the proposed is. It's daunting, it's 130 acres. How many? 138 or so.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Rest of it's all good.
Because there's requirements on the plan that we need to review and approve the plan. So they can.
Let me see if I can find the book.
Okay. It's skinny.
What?
It's skinny.
No, I know where it is, I just have to get my keys to get it somewhere.
Oh.
I'll go. I have one on my desk.
So it makes sense once you get to the back.
I know. Locked my door.
There it goes. There's Maria's office, her signature portfolio.
She's in, we're trying to lean her out slowly.
Maria's teaching Jen everything that she knows for 40 years.
They do the Vulcan mine transfer.
Yeah, you've been doing a great job, by the way, if that means anything for you. My opinion means anything. Really, really good job, really, really.
Did you get that?
Really, really good job.
I had to revise it a few times.
Yeah, we'll just have to, within the 48 hours as far as unanticipated, so we need to like make sure that we're going by that rule. By the chair, it's supposed to be, unanticipated. It's not supposed to be like late summits, it's supposed to be like when we're here and there was like an emergency type of thing.
This is a preliminary subdivision.
Yes.
Oh.
Thank you.
We can do later.
Hey, do I have our, the vouchers back?
I think there's three, two?
No, I think there was three.
Two vouchers and then two of the applications?
Just four.
Oh, oh, they got stalled out over there.
Oh, Mike. Okay. Okay. Next board, are we ready?
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is 7:45 PM Sutton Douglas Development, application for preliminary subdivision plan, Mumford Street and 5 Forest Street, possible votes. So we have some presenters. If you could get in a good spot where the audience and.
Where we stand. Where people normally. Even that's a title there.
We have the little ones, so it's probably more important when you're pointing that the audience can see, maybe over there behind him.
Sure.
And then, I don't think the camera's going to see, but.
Well, no, then you need to have the camera see it if there are people who are doing.
Yeah.
So maybe that's where you have to go.
Okay, sorry.
Because those people don't have anything. If they were, yeah, these guys can get up and walk around if they have to.
Okay.
But those guys can't.
Okay. All right. So name an address for the record and start wherever, whatever page you'd like to start on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wayne Bellick Land Design Collaborative will locate in Westboro, Massachusetts with civil site designers on the project. I'm joined tonight by Tim Flynn of Flynn Group of Building and he also does business as Flynn Build and Develop. We are here on behalf of Sutton Development, Douglas Sutton Development. Before we begin, I know that Jen has requested some information from us if our handouts really are worth, so that you can follow us as we go along. So, there you go, you can keep the rubber band. Thank you.
Is it beyond what we have here, these full sets?
Yeah, these are colored renderings and I provide a few folks with a copy of this so you have a general idea of what is going on, so. First of all, we want to thank you folks for having us. We know that, you know, with COVID and everything and, you know, with this type of format, we're kind of funky, we're not sure if this is going to be the future of the way we do these meetings, but again, thanks for having us. Before I get into the presentation, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is introduce Tim Flynn. He can tell you a little bit about himself and why he is working at Sutton Douglas Development.
Chair, members of the board, thank you so much for having us here. So like Wayne said, my name is Tim Flynn, I am the owner and president of Flynn Build and Develop, formerly known as Flynn Group Consulting. I got my start building at a young age and decided to open my own consulting firm to help nonprofits and small landlords understand the ins and outs of the industry. I started managing mid-small scale projects when I was 21 and from there, I've continued to do that from occupied rehabs, ground up builds, to gut lifts, whatever needs to be done. This project was presented to me as an opportunity to acquire new land to source a larger project to utilize land that was landlocked. So through that process, we identified ownership of an unknown parcel, Yale University owned it, we purchased it from them. Company down out of Rhode Island owns 110 acres, we acquired that as well. We own a small piece up in Sutton, but as you can see here, the majority of the land is in Douglas. I grew up in Natick, my office is out in Natick, most of my vendors are in the Middlesex area. Coming into Douglas, I've noticed it's a, it's a small, close knit community, so I'm excited to be here.
Excuse me, what is your name here?
My name is Tim Flynn. There's a few of us around in Massachusetts.
No, I mean, I've lived in Natick 25 years, I'm an architect. My parents are so crap.
So crap, yeah.
You know, I'm a conflict, right?
So I grew up, I, I don't know.
Sorry, continue, please.
Yeah, so I'm going to kick it back to Wayne.
Thanks, Tim. So again, Wayne Belliclan Design Collaborative, so what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, I'd like to do this certainly where I present, just for the context, so I'm referring to this first exhibit as a context exhibit, you know, kind of giving everybody the, an idea as to where the site lies in town and then we'll move into the existing conditions plan and then following that, I'd like to touch, just present to the board, you know, where we've been in meeting with the town, both towns, different departments, department heads, with yourself, Madam Chair, and with Eve and Bob and Eric, and then get into the proposed development. So again, the site is comprised of about 131 acres, highlighted by the yellow line around the entire perimeter. Of that 131 acres, about five and a half acres right here and here are located in the town of Sutton. The town line comes through here, this red line, and the balance, 125 acres, is located in the, in the town of Douglas. The property in Douglas is zoned in the rural agricultural district, which requires 90,000 square foot of lot area and 200 foot of frontage. The town of Sutton requires 200 foot of frontage and 80,000 square feet and that portion of the property is located in the rural residential zone district. The property obtains its frontage from four locations. It has conforming frontage in Douglas along Duval Road at 61 Duval Road.
No, it's Sutton.
Sutton, thank you. It also has conforming frontage on Forest Street, at 5 Forest Street. Both of these locations are existing developed house lots and they will be reconfigured, the lots will be reconfigured and incorporated into the subdivision. It also obtains frontage on Mumford Street and over here at Conservation Drive. These two locations of frontage are about 20 linear feet, so they're non-conforming. With that, that pretty much covers where it's located in town again, Duval Road, Conservation Drive, Torrey Road over here and Mumford Street over in here. So with respect to the existing conditions, as the board knows, typically for this level of this process, which is not necessarily a permitting process, but at this level, USGS maps based on your subdivision rules and regs, USGS maps, assessor's information and the like are typically suitable for submitting a preliminary plan. This particular plan, as you know, Madam Chair, has gone before the Conservation Commission and the reason we had gone before the Conservation Commission is because we recognized a significant amount of wetlands on the site. So again, with the perimeter being highlighted in yellow, we have wetlands on site in this area here, up through here with some finger-like projections, through here, down through here and out through this area here. Mumford Road goes through the property and it comes through under Conservation Drive, which is down in this area here, comes northeast through the site and then continues under Mumford Street. The depart幅 on the site varies from fairly flat or gentle to moderate to fairly steep and the grades out here range from anywhere from less than 5% to over 20%. The soils on site are mapped with, by the NRCS, National Resource Conservation Surface. It's hydrologic soil groups B through D. Those soils are not like your very sandy soils, which are A's, they're more loamy sandy loams, tills, some clay-like materials and those soil classifications out there are like five different groups. You have your Canton soils, your Charlton soils, Sitewit, Ridgebury, Montauk and your Woodbridge soils. The Woodbridge and the Montauk are your wetland soils, so, and that's the hydrologic soil. So in terms of the depart幅 on the site, the highest points are located up in this area here and it generally flows down to the wetlands, which, which would seem to go, which seems to be reasonable. And we have bridges in a couple of these locations here that eventually flow down to these, these resource areas. As I said earlier, as you can see on the, the plan, over in the town of Sutton at 61 Duval Road, developed as a single family house and over here at 5 Forest also developed, that's a single family house. As you folks know and the Butters know, there is no public sewer, there's no public water. So these existing lots are served by their own private wells and sewage disposal systems and likewise, as we're looking at the development, we would propose to do the same. Back to the soils, we had gone out, probably in early spring, Tim, had gone out and performed some soil testing and what we had done is after we had started to get a feel for what the wetlands looked like and knowing that there wasn't going to be much variation in that, that wetland delineation, we started looking at some schematic ideas as to how to lay out the site and we came up with the unit density we had and we had gone throughout and we, we opened up test pits across the entire site and ran some representative curves and what we found with that information is it was fairly consistent with the NCR mapped data. So with that, like I said, what I'd like to do is kind of just walk through where we've been and, you know, the homework that we've done and the assistance that we've gotten from the town in terms of discussing the process. This varies from town to town, while it's still a preliminary plan, the process, you know, with the boards and the public officials does vary from town to town. So as I said earlier, we had gone before the Conservation Commission and sought approval of the wetland delineation. The wetland delineation was delineated by a professional wetland scientist who's been before this commission and a number of permissions throughout the area and what they found is for the most part, the town's peer review consultant concurred with, with their delineation. Started the filing in March of this year and wrapped it up in May with the issuance of an order of resource delineation or an ORAD. After that, we said, okay, now we have to have our introductory, you know, informal meetings with town staff and eventually with the, with the boards. So we had an informal project introductory meeting with the Sutton Town Planner, Jen Hager and the acting town planner at the time, Ian McElwee from CMR PC. After that, in May, toward the end of May, we had a follow-up project introductory meeting with the town of Sutton, public safety officials, police chief and fire chief to get their thoughts on, you know, in, in terms of how we would address the public safety issues. We then had an informal with the Sutton Planning Board in the middle of June, followed by an informal with some of the Sutton residents who had come out that night to the planning board meeting and had some questions that we addressed. And then again, in the middle of June, we had a pre-application technical review meeting with the town of Douglas, their town staff, department heads and Sutton Town Planner Jen Hager. As we worked our way through June, we had an informal site visit with one of the Sutton residents who had some questions and she resides at 33 Mumford Street. Later in the month, we had a discussion with the Sutton DPW Director, Matt Stensel, as there were some questions raised about Duval Road, so we wanted to, you know, obtain some information on that. And then we went into July and as we got into July, we had an informal meeting with your, your chair, with, with Eve and with Bob and Eric, just to show what we had. That meeting, and no disrespect to any other groups that we had met with, but we, I personally found that to be the most informative meeting that we had, which really helped take what we originally presented and brought it to the point where we're at the, the plan that was presented as part of the application. We then, then had some email correspondence with the Douglas Deputy Fire Chief, Kelly Manning and this came as a result of some of the dialogue that we had with both the public safety officials. And then we had an informal introductory meeting with, let's see. Repeated information, too much. So with that, I'm going to get into the, the proposed plan and then circle back to what, some of the concerns that were raised after we fielded some questions from the board and from the Butters. So again, we have a network of roadways here. We were working with two sets of subdivision rules and regs, again, the town of Sutton and the town of Douglas and as we looked at this, our original layout is, those folks, I think Bob attended some meetings where we had originally looked at full access wholly out to the town of Sutton and not out to the, out to the town of Douglas through Forest Drive, in part due to, to steep depart幅. So we were looking at an emergency vehicle access at that time. So long and short, we have four roads in the, in the development. We have the main road that we're referring to as Road A, that measures 2,721 feet. We have Road B, which measures 1,322 feet. We have Road C, which measures 679 feet and then Road D, which measures 853 feet. Roads are currently designed complying with the town's subdivision rules and regs, however, as you saw in your application packets, we are looking to seek some relief to that. So from these, this road network, we're able to generate 31 house lots out here and that was also as a result of our soil testing, which again was consistent with the NRCS. We've come up with 31 house lots throughout the development, two of which are located at the end of Road C are your reduced frontage lots. As the, as the board knows, these reduced frontage lots require greater land area, but the reduced frontage can go down to 50 feet and that's basically where we are. So originally what we were looking at, so what this, again, of the entire property, we do have this portion in here developed as the residential component, the house lots, the balance of the land, some 55 acres of the 131 is going to remain as open space. The stormwater on site, we're going to design in accordance with the state and local stormwater regulations. Our approach here for stormwater, the way I like to do it, there are some sites, I know that, you know, everybody touts lid. Lid works in some instances and not in other instances. Where you have steep topography, lid doesn't work. You can kid yourself all you want, you're not going to get pure lid in steep topography and the reason that is, is your roadside swells. If you have steeper topography and you have your eight or 10, six to eight to 10% grades along these roadways, typically you're going to have to put berms along, you know, Kibco berm or Fidcon type berm along the roadway to contain the runoff, to avoid scouring and erosion on the sides of these roadways. So that's not really a lid type of development. Where it does work and where we're looking to incorporate it is as, as we site these catch basins along the road at the required 300 foot interval, we're taking the catch basins, routing it through a stormwater treatment unit and then daylighting it fairly close to the road so that it goes through a swell, eventually getting down to stormwater basin. The approach that, part of the benefits of doing that is to promote groundwater recharge as it's traveling down to the, the area promotes groundwater recharge and if you create meandering swells, it slows down the time of concentration, thus helping to reduce stormwater runoff. So again, in terms of the stormwater, we're going to comply with the state and local stormwater regs. We will require filings with the Conservation Commission. The first filing would be for the definitive subdivision and then on some of those lots that are in the jurisdiction of the CONCOM, we would look to file individual notices on those or requests for determination of that. As you can see in the approach that we have here, when I was speaking with Tim initially and he approached us on the, on the project, first of all, the process that we had gone through was different from anything else and I, and I kind of ripped Steve about this. We went through an interview process for this. I had never gone through an interview process. He, he looked at four firms and we wound up getting selected and it was honestly, Tim, it was, I'd never gone through it, I've been doing this 37 years. And as we talked in our meeting, the very first meeting, he said, what I want to do is I want to develop house lots, high-end, tasteful house lots and I want to limit the amount of clearing to only what we need. He was, I mean, we're on the same page. We're a firm with civil engineers and landscape architects. When we do our projects, we work closely with the, the landscape architects, so they can, they'll lay things out and then as we look at it, we'll say, hey, knucklehead, it doesn't work, it's too flowery. We introduced some of this, I'm just kidding, but we, that's the way we work. We work collaboratively and we, we work that way with Tim. So each of these lots.
Let me jump in for one second. The, the thing that, and, you know, obviously we hired Wayne and Wayne's firm, very happy to have you on, so thank you for your hard work on this. The last thing I want to do is come in to a area that is wooded and has wildlife and just steamroll everything down in, in its path. That's not what I want to do, that's not what the owners of Sutton Douglas Development want to do. What I want to do is come in strategically, pull down what needs to be pulled down, put a house that I would want to live in, that the community, that adds to the value of the community and also is not completely overbearing to what's around it. Each one of these acres, excuse me, each one of these lots is two acres. Two acres where I come from is massive, absolutely massive. I'd love to put five houses on each one, you can't do that here. And I know that and that was our mindset as we come in. The idea, the, the architect that we brought onboard is a residential, but also a, I hope he's going to kill me if he's watching because I forget. It's, it's a very technical term, but it is, it's lead, but it's also historic restoration. So one of his jobs is coming in and restoring historic homes. I love that. I want to incorporate that into the builds with the materials that we're using for the homes.
Thank you, Tim. So again, like I said, that, that's basically how it lays out, we're looking again at private water wells on each of the lots and sewage disposal systems down gradient of the well as required in the local board of health regulations. So what I'd like to do is turn it over for questions to you, Madam Chair and your board. You know, I, I think I've given a little bit of an overview on this and totally open it up to you folks as to whatever questions you have.
Okay, just for clarifying, lid for the audience, if you could explain what that is.
Sure.
I don't think a lot of people know.
Low impact development is the whole thing, you know, has, you know, basic principles of low impact development or lid, is thinking small. So instead of going out and creating, and I'm sure you folks have seen these hideous, absolutely hideous looking stormwater basins, these big rectangular holes in the ground, sloped on the side and chain link fences around them. sloped on the side and chain-link fences around them, gut-wrenching-looking types of stormwater management systems. Lid thinks differently than that. And rather than, from a stormwater perspective, rather than taking all the runoff from the top of the hill up here and sending it into a monstedity of a basin down in here, lid thinks small. So, what they say is that, in their principles, is we collect runoff in here, we address rooftop runoff, we recharge it, we put it in the ground so that it promotes groundwater recharge. In addition to doing that, we site built basins throughout the site. So, in this particular case, we have basins in various areas throughout the site. What you'll see on the plan and the board will see on the rendering, I've got these dashed red lines. Those dashed red lines represent easements. Those easements are stormwater easements, lines of site easements and the like. So, as part of lid, it's thinking small, capturing runoff at its source and treating it and attenuating it in various locations throughout the site. As part of that, in looking at this development, we're going to incorporate lid to the greatest extent practicable. And the reason we're going to do that is because we have topography on the site, like I said, in some instances, I mean, we're talking less than 5%, but in other areas, it's over 20%. So, in those areas where we have that less than 5%, we're going to be utilizing whatever principles we can for lid, going with the roadside swells, capturing the runoff, treating it, and then discharging it right off the side of the road through the woods. And so, it makes its way down naturally throughout the site. So, that's basically lid. In addition to that, it's the stormwater treatment units. So, you take these stormwater treatment units, rather than units, using the units, one good effective way to address stormwater are gravel wetlands, conservation commissions like this. This is lid, where you take a stormwater runoff and you can meet a lot of the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act through incorporating one of these gravel wetlands. And essentially, it's almost like a septic system in, underneath the wetland. And it takes it, puts it through stone, it treats it, and then it releases it through various layers of soil. Rain gardens, you folks have heard of rain gardens, the same thing. So, rather than having these nasty holes in the ground, what we like to do at LBC is as part of our design and why we have our landscape architects, is we like to, with these stormwater management systems, create amenities of the site, incorporate it into part of the landscape. So, that's basically what you're looking at with lid or low-impact development.
Okay. All right. Board members, yes, Ernie, go first.
So, you're proposing no retention or detention bonds at all?
We are.
Okay.
But they're going to be done in a way where, again, in this particular case, we're looking at a development that if it were flat, fairly flat, if we had our less than 2% or 5% slopes, usually if you're somewhere less than, you know, 5% to 6%, very flat or rolling, great example, we're doing a project down in Bellingham where we're incorporating lid principles. And one of the reasons we're doing that is it's flat, hydrologic soil groups A and B, which are well-draining soils. So, typically, when you get those types of soils, you can do that. When you get these tougher soils and the tough topography, you really can't do that. So, what we're going to do is in the lower-lying areas, yes, we're going to incorporate the lid principles. And these other areas, what we're going to have to do is go with the more conventional stormwater treatment units, so you deep-sump, put a catch basins. So, we are going to have stormwater basins. What I will not do is, and I would hope that the planning boards are on the same mindset, is create these detention basins, that are these rectangular holes in the ground, these nasty eyesores, something that you see, and no disrespect to Mastard, but a lot of the time, you see them along like 395, 146, 290, these big holes in the ground, okay?
I mean, a lot of our subdivisions have detention and retention systems in them right now.
Yep.
That's the method we've been following.
Yep. And so, that's what we do. In terms of the fence around it...
We don't put fences around them.
That's perfect. That's great. That's great to hear.
As far as the, where you're going to have these swale-type systems taking the water off?
Yep.
Okay, you talked about an easement.
Yep.
So, this is going to be probably presented when it's finished to the town for the takeover?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, the easements would be part of a maintenance that the town would have to maintain?
That's correct.
How many, how many of these easements are there?
So, typically...
I work for the highway department.
Yep. I kind of sense that when you started asking the question.
That was obvious.
So, typically, when we do something like this, as you know, your responsibilities are primarily, you know, the street sweepings in the spring and the fall.
Yes.
And then you've got your maintenance of the stormwater treatment units. The cross-country channels, the way that we would design these is that when everything is all done, basically, what you're going to have is a swell in the middle of the woods, okay? So, it's, when it's all done, it's going to look like it's been there. On the outfall end of that, what we're going to have is your typical plunge pool or your sediment-type basin. So, and those sediment basins are sized based on the velocities coming out of that pipe. So, we will size them, they'll be of varying sizes. Some of them will be about the size of the opening in the middle of the table, others will be about the size of the table. Their shapes will be all subject to whatever the velocity is coming out of that pipe. So, as part of that maintenance program, as it daylights off the edge of the layout, that will be part of your program. If your basins are properly maintained, you should never get any silt in those structures.
Any easements be big enough to get equipment in to do work if we have to?
Yes. Yep. So, and so I sit on a board of sewer commissioners in my town and having done this as long as I have, I started my career working in the field doing survey. And I think that all engineers, when they do work in this industry, should have some of that experience to know what highway departments, DPWs, or contractors encounter in the field so that when you go to design an easement, you know you can't do something untouchable with an easement. You can even cite the machine and excavate and cast material aside. And so, basically, when we design our systems, well, or easements, we will design it such that the material, that the machine can straddle the pipe, take off the loam and subsoil, and then get into the parent material, cast it on the opposite side.
Very good. Thank you.
To the chair.
Yeah.
How many easements? I don't think we got that accurate.
That's a, that's a good question. I think you got an answer. I did get the answer. So, with these easements, the easement, so we'll take the stormwater, either piped or through these swells, again, subject to topography. So, tentatively, what we have, so we have yet to run, we have started to perform an existing conditions hydrologic analysis. So, what's going to happen is once we run that, we'll have a better idea as to the actual final locations of these stormwater basins. I've gone ahead in here and cited them based on topography. And the thought is that whatever topography, we can minimize and utilize whatever's there. We have a depression, where we just berm up the down gradient side, that's what we'd like to do. So, to answer the question, all these, we've got a couple up front, which would be storm, small basins in the front. We've got one in here, so there's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Of these easements, and I think that's a good question as well, because I think the wheels are turning. It's like, what are you sticking the town with in terms of maintenance? Perfectly legitimate question. On my board, I asked the same question, okay? So, when you look at this, in the way we have, for instance, this easement here, that's situated right off the edge of the road. If the catch basins are properly maintained, if the roads are properly maintained with sweeping, the discharge into that basin will be handled right at the inlet to that basin into a plunge pool. Yep. So, you can literally take your machine alongside of the road, take the boom, reach in and clean it up.
What road do you plan on coming off of as your primary entrance into the subdivision as you start to work?
So, that's a, that's a very good question. It's probably going to be Duval Road, okay? And the reason that is, I think, the majority of the work, access to the site in terms of haul routes. So, what we are looking to do is try to minimize cuts and fills on the site. So, and as we started to look at this, we've minimized that as best we can. And that's what we're looking to do because it's going to cost the developer money, it's going to be more vehicles on the road, construction equipment, that's not what we want, okay? So, most of that activity would occur initially down Duval Road. I really don't see anything happening up on Forest Street. It takes forever and a day to get over to here, plus the width of Forest Street and the surrounding streets up in here. I'd measure them anywhere from 17 to 20 feet. And so, which is why in part, when I requested the waivers for this, if you look at the character of the roads in this area, in my mind, you know, when you look at these roads, provided that they satisfy the safety, the public safety officials, because in the end, if they can maneuver their vehicles, if you can demonstrate to them that the turning movements of their fire apparatus can be made, well, that works. And so, that's part of the reason that we're looking at these waivers. I've seen subdivision rules and regs where they require a 30-foot pavement width for roads. I think you guys require 26 feet. And looking at that, when you're coming off a road such as this up here, which is only 18-foot wide on average down here, 20-foot wide, and then you come into a 26-foot wide paved road, it's just, the hierarchy, it seems, backwards. So, again, but thinking small, thinking lid, less pavement.
Oh, yeah. You got less stormwater.
Yep. Absolutely.
Are you guys proposing any country swales or...
That's what I'm talking about. That's exactly, yeah.
The terminology is a little different.
Yep.
Depending on where you're from. What's the distance between the parole road and when you get to your first house, roughly?
So, we have an existing house in here. And the difference with this situation in here is the only thing that's going to really change on this lot is the configuration of the driveway. So, that first house, we're looking at a scale here of 120. So, if that's 360 feet, that first one's 360 feet.
Okay.
And then you're about, you know, 700 feet in before you hit this guy in.
First off.
Yeah. What we did is as part of the design is that, for a couple of reasons. One, I don't like pulling up to a subdivision and looking up the road and seeing a runway. I don't like that. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to be able to look up the road and see the road broken up with the vegetation on either side. That's why I like doing perpendicular roads. So, in this particular case, we came in like this, we swept it this way. So, basically, when you look up the gut of this road, you're going to see vegetation along this side. And we do the same thing. The only area that we didn't do that is in here, only because in terms of topography, this was a sweet spot. True. This is where we're going to...
To the chair?
Ernie?
Utilities?
Yep.
Underground or above ground?
Yep. So, we're looking to run all the utilities underground. So, we have a utility pole out here where we're taking, we're planning to take that, run it underground. West side of Road A, we're looking to take the electric telephone and cable underground. Again, because there's no sewer and water in the road, another reason why we're seeking some of the waivers that we're seeking, because it's not really necessary. You know that when you get out in the roads, especially when you're dealing with drainage, sewer, not to mention the other utilities, a lot of times, you get into these situations and there's nothing but spaghetti. So, when you have a situation where you have a lot of spaghetti for utilities under the road, it does make sense to go with these wider roads, okay? But when you're dealing with something like this, and the only utility that you're having, you have out in the road is electric cable and television at three feet down, and then you have stormwater that's five, six feet down, you know, it really doesn't make sense to have these wider roads. Like I said, one of the other things that we're doing, and the highway department will appreciate this, is rather than having a linked pipe network throughout the road, and you'll be able to see that, and I think, you know, if you look at the plan views or the 40-scale drawings that we submitted, you'll see that we've broken up a lot of the drainage infrastructure. And that does a couple of things. From the town's maintenance perspective, that takes a lot of that, like I said, it daylights it off the side of the road. So, rather than maintaining all the pipes and flushing them, getting your jet back out whenever you need it, rather than doing that, you have a pair of basins here, discharges out to here. You have another pair of basins here, discharges out to here, no linkage with the pipe, okay? So, you can minimize that, less guts in the street, less pipe to clean.
Okay. Mike?
Through the chair.
Yep.
How much of that land has already clear cut?
Currently? Just the existing house lots. There are some old haul roads.
They just logged that area.
Yep.
So, how much of that land right now has been forested and cut?
Yep.
Is what I'd like to know.
Yep. So, they do have haul roads. I could easily get a number on that.
Just looking for a general idea.
Yeah. So, if we're at...
138. Well, there was a forest cutting plan filed, right? There was a forest cutting plan filed, so it probably lists the acreage on there.
Yeah.
I'm looking for a ballpark, because, you know, just to see how much far in it's all been logged.
Yeah. So, I wasn't involved at that point. So, I'll defer to Tim on that.
That was not through us.
No, no.
Yeah, so I actually...
I'm just trying to get an idea on, you're laying up these houses, how far in there has already been logged.
So, I'm glad you asked that. Oh, boy, am I glad you asked that question. So, take a look at, and it's hard to see on the color rendering, but on your exist, on the grading and drainage plan, you'll see some of these haul roads just laid out, okay? What I tried to do, I had a couple, so I tried to work it topographically for individual site home access drives, along with the limits of clearance. Wherever I could utilize those haul road corridors, I did. So, I ran the driveway right up through the gut, just trying to minimize the clearance. So, if I were to, out of 130 acres, maybe three, four, five acres, I'm guessing?
Oh, that's all they cut?
Yeah.
So, I can tell you that there is, it is...
It's more than that.
It's more than that.
Okay. So, I'm looking, so I'm looking at the haul roads that I went through to the soil testing. So, beyond that, as you folks know, when you go through that site like many other sites, it's like going through Vietnam. The vegetation, not that I've been there, but the vegetation is heavy, it's thick, it's very dense.
I've hunted that land for 25 years.
Name an address, please, and we're just gonna, the board's asking questions, but if you want to say a comment, I'll let you name an address.
My name is Gary Prince.
And your address.
I live at One Forest.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I've hunted that land for the last 35 years, I lived there 34. And it is pretty thick in there.
Yep.
But there's a lot more clear than three or four acres.
Yep.
Because I've been out there quite a few times.
And with, I'll do, through the chair, Madam Chair, I'm just looking at what, and I'm not disputing that one bit. I am looking at what I saw and honestly, being a WUS engineer, I go out and I'm walking and it's like, I'm not walking in there. I am not going in there. So, I, you know...
Well, if I can.
Yep.
Don't even bring it up, and I totally understand the concept.
Yep.
Keeping that as much growth as possible can. It's already been forested, so it's been cut. I mean, there's, what do you, I mean, you're going to be saving 30, 40 trees? I mean, it's been cut in there. I watched them log it.
Yep.
And they had mountains of logs coming out of that woods. So, it's just one of those things, totally appreciate all that you're saying and I totally understand it, but you're going to be saving one-inch diameter trees, two-inch diameter trees for most parts. And if there are larger trees in that area, they're there for seed trees, and it'd be nice to see usually a lot of those saved.
Yep.
There's a reason usually a forester does that is to regrow that area.
Absolutely. So, I can't speak to foresting, not my expertise by any means, also not a hunter. So, I certainly don't spend much time out there in that capacity. What I can say is that there will be a cost-benefit analysis done throughout the land to identify whatever needs... to identify whatever needs to be kept in order to preserve the integrity of the land and the wetlands, not only by law, right, through HONCOM and, you know, state regulations, but also for the integrity of the division, subdivision. We are not, and this is something I appreciate about Wayne's firm, we do not like to come in and do one and dones. We want to come in and build a relationship with different towns to be able to come back, come before you, get to know you, and do more work. So, in terms of the happy to get a number for what's already been logged, not a problem. We just don't have it.
No. And I appreciate your honesty. It's just something that, like you said, you've only gone in a little bit.
Yeah.
They logged that, I think, for a year. They logged out of there.
Do you remember what year it was?
2020.
2020?
Yeah, wasn't that long ago?
I've got to have it in my email.
So...
And your design and development, I understand like a center. But take that all into account, you're going in an area that's been logged.
Yeah, so additionally, you know, I totally hear you.
Oh, yeah, I have that in my email. I'm just, it's difficult to find.
So, Felton, who's our surveyor, also went out and did a very in-depth review of the land as a surveyor. So, maybe we can touch base with him and understand.
No, appreciate that. It's just looking for information.
Yeah.
And I'm going to go back on one other thing you were saying about the roads. The reason we like to have the wide roads around here, because it snows. Because if you don't have a wide road, by the time March comes around, you don't have a road.
Yep.
Unless the town's bringing out the loader to open it up. So, I understand your point towards a certain aspect, but once the time that wide road, guess what?
Yep.
You hope and pray you have a wide road.
Yep.
Because they get small real quick. Even with the width we have, it's kind of narrow. But, and everything can attest to that, where these streets, you know, they get narrowed up.
Yep, they do, they do.
No, thanks.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Are you phasing this project?
We're probably looking at phasing it.
Rather than doing it all, yes, yeah. We would be, the construction plan has not been finalized yet by any...
Your plan is to phase it?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah. I think too, from my perspective, especially on something like a subdivision, you don't phase it. All you're doing is he's going to spend money because it's going to open up a world of problems. So, the approach is you go in, you address it early. So, one of the things that, you know, in terms of the site practice, when you go in there and you clear whatever, two trees are left. When we go in there, you clear those trees, you set your erosion sediment control measures, then you start building your stormwater attenuation building, basins. Because once you clear those trees, the hydrology changes.
Yep.
So, yeah, let me be clear, Wayne, thanks. We would be phasing the home dones for sure.
Good. Just through the chair, can, as we go through the review, can you just put a proposal of what phases you would do in what homes? The reason why is because what we wouldn't want to do is open it up in an area, and then you're bringing trucks through there where, you know, homes can develop. We just like to see kind of where the phase would go. If you say, okay, these houses here would be phase one, this would be phase three.
Yep.
So, then you finish off the cul-de-sac.
Good question. Yep.
So, these six houses, seven houses can be done in one phase there, not, the disturbance is the big thing. And because once homeowners start living in these areas, the amount of disturbances, what we would try to understand.
No, great point.
Thank you.
If I could say through the chair, almost like reverse building, side at the back, so that, because the side up front, they're going to be living through it for the next, who knows how long. Side at the back, they're in, they're done, you don't worry about it.
Through the chair.
Yep.
I ask, your financial viability of the project has been done early on, because you wouldn't be in this phase. What size houses, how many bedrooms roughly per house have you anticipated? We've anticipated anywhere between three to five is what we're budgeting right now. So, average of four? Average of four. However, right now, we're unclear because we haven't obviously finalized any of the floor plans. But given the pandemic and people working from home now, the four, it was originally five, we might decrease it to four, put in a home office, depending on the layout. Do you think about square footages in all in general? Square footage is average 26, 26 to 3.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. So, as far as our approval for the preliminary plan, we had to have each page must contain in the lower right corner subdivision name for every page.
Yep.
So, that's A. If more than one page, each page must contain in the lower right-hand corner the subdivision name, the page number, date of the plan, and one applicable provisions for recording. So, we don't have the name of the plan on the bottom right corner.
Okay. So, so the way, so that's basically reformatic, reformatic.
Yep, yep. So, we can still, you know, move forward with modifications.
Yeah. Madam Chair, what section are you writing?
That is A. So, it's 4.1.4 contents, A. I think that's more for bookkeeping and when we get to the definitive plan.
Thank you.
Do we have a subdivision name?
Basically Sutton Douglas.
Currently, we're calling it Sutton Douglas Development.
Okay. So, that's what we're sticking with?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, so we're...
Very creative.
You can look, yeah, you can tell where it's located, I guess.
3% versus 97%. That starts with Sutton.
Yeah.
We pay homage to Sutton.
Okay, yeah, yeah, bow down to them, yeah.
So, no, so it is a name later to be identified, but as of right now, we are continuing to call it Sutton.
Yeah. So, D requires for the preliminary approval, subdivision name, perimeter boundaries, north point, date, scale, or subdivision name, perimeter boundaries as compiled from record plan. That's in D.
I'm sorry, is that, are you saying that's deficient on the plans or...?
If you're changing the subdivision name.
No, it's going to be Sutton Douglas Development for, nope, Sutton Douglas Development. There you go.
Okay, all right. And you had requested on your list of waivers, I don't believe that you need to request the section in the preliminary plans for the alternative development. So, the way that I'm reading it, so you should be requesting any waiver, the waiver list from definitive plan requirements. So, we'll just take that one off the top, the R, review of alternative development scenarios. I think verbally, you can just tell us that you've reviewed your options that are available to you.
Okay.
And you've already spoken about the low-impact development anyway. So, I think we just take that right off the list of waivers. So, that's one last waiver.
Thank you.
And what are we doing about the mailboxes?
What would you like us to do?
Yeah, where would you like?
Well, the postmaster would be the person that needs to give the blessing.
That's a good question, yeah. So, that's probably, on something like this, that, yeah, that's a good question, whether or not you have a community mailbox versus individuals one. It's a good question, and we will have an answer.
I believe we did review that in our review meeting, too. That was one of my bullets on that. It just slipped.
Well, it's funny you say that, Madam Chair, because when I was pulling together the list of waivers, I had the print, which I marked up everything on, and I had that on. There were a lot of things including that, I know I had that on. I had the print on my desk. I asked my guys, I says, can you incorporate, change a few things? One of them was the trails. So, I said, could you address this? You know, just go through my list of eliminating it. And then I went back for the print to, because I came up with this list here that I presented earlier. And I said, so what did we ask? What, and so I, Chris, where's the print?
Yeah, it disappeared.
Oh, yeah. I know where it is. It's down at...
The traffic hand.
Yeah. It's now gone.
Okay. That's all right.
Yeah, mailbox.
Yeah, sure.
Can I ask a related question? Also, at the meeting that we had about this, we did talk about flexible development. So, can you tell us a little bit about why you didn't choose that? And in particular, the reduced lot, frontage lots?
Yep.
The one in the back is really crazy looking, because it's got the driveway, and then it's got, correct me if I'm wrong, it's got, the one in the front shares the driveway with the one in the back that has the big snake for...
Yeah.
So, is there a reason, like flexible develop? And there isn't a whole lot of, I know, I know at that meeting, we also discussed whether there was anywhere to go in the trails, because there's a lot of wetland. But there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of open space at all. That is, the only part that's really open is not...
Well, that remained our land.
Is this piece that's sort of not usable.
So, there were...
So, is there a reason why you, did you look at it and why did you say no?
So, Eve, I think that's a good question. So, we had, as we said at that meeting, so the question that we had at the meeting is, is that something you, you know, look to explore? Or you basically held back on this type of development? As Tim said just a few minutes ago, they basically have done a market analysis or are doing a market analysis, and they're targeting this type of development, these, you know, four to 6,000, three, you know, four to 6,000 square foot houses, whatever, three to fives. And that's what he was looking at. And to answer the question as to why we had, we had the shared driveway to get up here, if you recall during that discussion, you folks remember that there was a question about looping these two cul-de-sacs? And as we said, there's no way in God's name that you could do that because of all the resource areas through here, including the 200-foot riverfront area. We'd never be able to meet the performance standards of the Wetlands Protection Act. So, that was, that was off the map or off the list. So, to answer your question, Eve, we've got wetlands in here with a finger-like projection that comes up through here. We've got wetlands in here. And so, basically, this is out on a peninsula in here. So, there was no other means of access to get out to this other lot here. We created the two backland lots, if you recall, as a result of that discussion, when we were informed that that was something that is allowed under subdivision rules and regs. And one of the reasons we had done it, just so the board knows, we had, I sensed, I didn't look, but I sensed that when we laid out the plans, I know the chair started to dry heat to the configuration on some of the lots. We had taken some of these lots.
I don't know what you're talking about.
And she said, this is going to fly with the board. And she said, you need to fix that. Eve agreed. And so, in order, basically what I had, some of these lots kind of wrapped around with a tail to meet water. So, we reconfigured this in here. We moved what was a backland lot that was originally in this location here, moved it over to here, and then we learned that we were allowed to have two backland lots. So, in terms of why we have the shared driveway in this configuration, it's basically because of the wetlands. In terms of the open space...
So, you had, so, I just want to clarify. So, when we saw those plans the first time, you had more of these odd-shaped lots, and now you just have one, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't remember.
There was multiple on the bottom with the weird line.
I didn't remember what it was like.
And the other thing is, it's 40 feet of frontage that you need for the reduced frontage lots?
Yep, we did provide 50s.
Yeah. So, just to let you know.
Okay.
Thanks.
I picked on the women was odd, but I guess there were...
But there were multiple odd ones.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the best you're going to get with a wetland that's there and utilizing the buildable area.
They have all the woods behind them and stuff.
Yeah.
But those two houses, they'll just have to be dated different because they got a common drive. And that's up to you guys to worry about it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Somebody wants to be probably in that back corner.
And there's probably going to be, I think, in writing, it needs to be requested maybe or by consensus for the second reduced frontage lot in one contiguous parcel. So, Board, do we have, do we remember what we just did by consensus?
I think I can recall.
Utilizing, utilizing the best scenario for that parcel. I mean, it's really avoiding wetland filling.
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, that's the main thing.
I take that over.
Yeah.
And these are wetlands alone.
Yeah, okay.
And then inside that area, nothing's disturbed, all in the whole middle area.
Leave it alone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And did we receive two 24-by-36 prints and 20 half-scale reduced prints, 12-inch by?
Yep.
Okay. So, I just don't see them, that's why. I just want to make sure that we do have them in the office for the preliminary submitter. Okay. Okay.
So, with respect to the wetlands on the site map, Chair, of 130 acres, we have 50 to 55 acres of wetlands on the site. With respect to the upland areas, so Madam Chair, I'm sure you'll recall in this part of our presentation, when the commission, our consultant had gone out here, and I don't know literally how many miles. I remember I did the quantity takeoffs for Scott as he was calculating the filing fee. And I just looked at, I said, you've got to be freaking kidding me. There's a lot of wetlands out here. So, I checked it again, and there was a lot of wetlands out here. What the commission agreed to do is basically because there was no means of access to the upland areas, which are down in this area. So, if you look at this site map here, which shows the entire site, we have upland areas in here. So, this represents wetlands, okay? This represents wetland. What the Conservation Commission agreed to was even though all these wetlands were delineated in the field and located by field survey, nothing was happening back here anyway, because of the state regulations wouldn't allow for massive wetland disturbance and all that activity in the riverfront area. So, what we have in here is in terms of upland areas, you have upland in here, you have it throughout here, so there's quite a bit of upland. You have a wetland that comes up to here and back onto the other properties. But there is a significant amount of upland out on the site. So, it's not like it's useless land. I think if folks went out there and they started to walk the area. When we talk wetlands too, as the chair knows, when you're looking at wetlands and you, sir, as an architect, you know that you're not standing in water that's coming over. Some instances you are, and these all look at wetlands. But in other cases, if you walk through a wetland, you don't even, unless you know the vegetation and unless you do a core sample, you don't even know you're in a wetland. So, there are many areas up here as you're walking through the site. You know, you know, that something goes off in your head, get the heck out of the standing water. And then in other cases, you wouldn't even know unless you knew the vegetation, you know, all three layers of vegetation, whether or not you're in a wetland.
Okay. All right, Board, anyone else have any?
I just have one.
Yeah, sure.
Can you just clarify, is Road D going to be openly accessible or is that emergency access?
That's a great question. That's a great question. We, that particular one, originally, we were looking at an emergency vehicle access up to here. And the thought was that we would gate this up in here and gate it down below in here and have all the traffic come out to DeValle Road.
You've got houses there.
What's that?
You have two houses within that.
We have, we have houses now. Yeah, we do. And so, that was, that was the approach. And what we heard from not only the public safety officials, the public safety fire chiefs basically said, we don't want to have to have a Knox box to come through.
Yeah, if there's an emergency, you're not going to have a gate.
Right. You're not going to have a gate if a fire truck goes through.
Yes.
With an emergency, my understanding, I have friends and family that are firefighters. And so, we don't care what's in our way, we're coming through. And so, basically, we got that from them. And so basically, we got that from them. And we had one of the abutters, Mr. Prince, I think it was a comment, maybe from your wife who commented about the appearance up in this area here of that gate. He said, you know what? We're gonna do away with that. We're gonna do a couple things. We're going to open this up to a through road up to this area in here. So now, it's unrestricted through up to the forest.
Anybody familiar with the land is gonna know, by Forest Street, there's a house in the middle of it. So we're proposing to relocate it.
Okay. Board, anyone else? Yes, right?
Where it comes out on Forest Street, are you making sure there's no headlight glare on any houses in that area?
Yeah, so in this particular case.
Because the road's at a slight angle coming out, it looks like.
Yep. Yep, so as you approach this area in here, and you, and you, you come out through here, the nearest houses are over in here on either side of the street.
So you're not gonna come out, so if they're pulling out? I can see the house.
Yep.
But the idea, you hit the road kind of, kind of close, but I guess.
In the middle.
You're going into a wooded lot?
Yep, so it won't be.
Across the street.
It's not a wooded lot.
Okay. Board members, if you guys are all set, I'm gonna open it up to the audience and then...
How about the waivers for the preliminary?
What?
He's gonna list a.
Yeah, I know, I figured we would hear from the audience quickly and we are approaching, it's 8:55.
Yep.
So, name an address and you can address the chair for questions.
I want to address you, Madam Chair, initially and then.
Yeah, name and address.
Name and address.
Oh, my name is Lucille Prince.
Yeah.
I live at 1 Forest Street. My husband, Gary, and I own two parcels, our houses on one, and we have another parcel that's separate.
Behind you.
But right behi, right along the perimeter, right there.
Yep.
Right next to that beautiful road that you're gonna put in. So my initial comment is, it's more of a question. I, I'm under the impression or my understanding that when stuff that affects an abutter, a plan such as this, that we would have been notified with the notice of this meeting. I have to say that the majority of information that we've gotten was through the town of Sutton. Became aware of someone that lives in Sutton, informed me of when their meetings were taking place. So, I was on those calls by Zoom. I also did attend the, because we did, the only notice that we officially got about this whole project was the delineation notice.
Wetland delineation.
Yeah, wetland delineation, right. I was on that call as well. Got a glimpse of what that subdivision consisted of. But the majority of information that we got was through the town of Sutton and on their website, they post the materials that are being reviewed for the meeting, so had the opportunity to look at those. Asked a couple of questions, but it wasn't the best venue for that because it was Sutton. I found out about this meeting less than 48 hours ago by accident from somebody from Sutton. I found out that there's a meeting on Monday, this coming Monday, in Sutton. I went once again to their website, found your four-page letter that clearly gave more information about the updates and, you know, where some of those updates came from. There was a lot more information in there and found very interesting. So, was gonna prepare for that meeting on Monday, even though I don't live in Sutton, I live on Forest Street. And then it wasn't until probably 36 hours ago that I even found out about this meeting tonight. So my husband and I weren't really able to, you know, look at those plans in any depth. Obviously, as an abutter, very concerned that we weren't provided notice.
I don't believe it's, yeah, it's not required.
It's preliminary.
By the subdivision control law in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I did too.
That's, I mean, you didn't know anything less or more than I did or anybody on this board?
Yeah, it's not a formal notification.
This is a public, through the chair, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. And so, for the public hearing, so for instance, with the INRAD process and the delineation of the wetlands, we were required, the applicant was required, under the Wetlands Protection Act, to provide notification to the abutters. Under, under the subdivision control law, for the preliminary B, for the preliminary plan, the Form B, they're not required. However, when we get to that point for the definitive plan, all the abutters will be notified.
We will be notified?
Yes.
You know what we know.
So, it's Massachusetts subdivision control law, which has the requirements of the notifications.
Through the chair, I believe it's 300 feet?
Yeah. There's an abutters list.
300 feet is, is of the, of the parcel that's being affected. So 300 feet.
Where with it? I would think where with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's when you know about that.
Yeah, okay. So let's refocus. So we're, we're in our realm of going by the law, the state law, for subdivision control law at this moment. This is a preliminary plan. So, and you were notified through the INRAD process, so you must have thought something was going to be occurring.
Well, yeah, obviously, I'm not in the dark, but most, the majority of information that we got was, you know, from the town of Sutton.
Yeah.
Because they.
I have been requesting.
They posted materials online.
Yeah, we, we don't have that capability yet. We're working on it.
And they're ahead of us. It's a surprise.
So, and they have a planner.
You guys.
So, one, one other issue just for, for you to fill, but if, even if the, if the planning board tonight approves the preliminary plan, that doesn't have, that does not have any standing that they're gonna definitely do.
That's correct.
The definitive plan, they're just sort of saying, yeah, you're going in the right direction, you know, do some more information. So, it, just because they say yes tonight, if they say yes tonight, does not mean it's a done deal at all.
This is the first time we saw this, okay?
And when the definitive.
You're right with us.
When the definitive plan is actually submitted, that's when the public hearing kicks in and you'll get notice and you'll be able to see it. So you're not behind me.
Correct, correct. We need you.
Can we ask questions?
I will be there.
Yeah, I mean, we may not, we may not be engineers and land surveyors, but you know, we've lived there 34 years. Folks that are here, we've all, we're all, you know.
We're neighbors.
We've been there, we've been here forever, so obviously.
Yeah, they're.
We're not, our intention isn't to, you know, put a halt to this project.
Yeah.
We just feel like, you know, we need to be part of the discussion.
Yeah, the applicant is following the rules of the subdivision control law.
So what I, what I can say is, when I typically do a project of this scale, what we do is we open up a website and it's a website that we can direct folks to and that's where we'll publicize the most up-to-date information, where you'll see renderings. So what we submit to the town, which is public record, will also be posted on the website. Also, we walk around and we fly our neighborhoods. So this, to Madam Chair's point, this is the very beginning of the process. You're gonna be sick on my face by the time that.
You might be sick of mine. You might be sick of mine too.
Hey, I come, the majority of my work was in Boston for a long time and in town, you're on top of your neighbors. So, I come from a different point of view where this project doesn't work unless we engage you.
That's right.
And so that is something that we're committed to.
Yep, yep. And this is part of, you know, you're talking about being notified 36 hours ago. When did you tell, mention to me this, this thing with the website? Was it within the last 36 or 24 hours?
Hours.
Yeah, well, no, actually, he's, he said, I'm go, just so you know, I am going to do this. What do you think? I said, I think that's a pretty decent idea. He said, so I'm gonna, we're gonna create a website, we're gonna post things, we're gonna keep people informed. So, that's the, that's the approach that we're going to take.
Okay.
My whole thing is communications.
Right, yeah, we gotta speed this along. Did you have a specific question about the content of the plans or any comments at this time? Because this is not a public hearing, this is a public meeting, so we gotta be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
One second, she's. Yeah, sorry.
So if, if, like, I was able to print out the letter that you submitted to the town of Sutton, but, you know, the plan itself is, you know, several pages, like 30 something pages or whatever, is it possible for us to get a copy of that?
We could email that to you if you want the.
Seriously, take it. There you go. Seriously, because we want refinement.
And this is preliminary anyway, so this is not gonna be, it'll be fine-tuned.
But we want to meet up on these.
Yep, they're always available in the town hall.
I know, the town hall. I mean, I just got that today, right here.
And anything that the planning office, submitted to the planning office is a public document, we may not be able to, I'm not sure if we are always gonna be able to give it to you electronically at this point, but we will always have a document in town hall. So if you come and you wanna look at it or you wanna, you know, then there, there's always one in the planning office and you can always come down and ask.
And again, like Tim had mentioned, there's gonna be a website set up, so I will transparency, you guys can see everything. They can ask you questions. And that's how you have it, that's how you're gonna set it up, they can ask questions and like.
Yeah, so there would be emails, there would be everything set up. And at any point, if there's a question.
Okay. You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, name an address, please.
I'm sorry, Mike Lacy, 18 Forest Street.
Yeah.
I've been there for 40 years. And I would suggest the fact you include in the plans, the replacement of all of those roads in that subdivision was rebuilt 40 years ago or 38 years ago. And because.
Sidewalks.
Ideally, as you're suggesting, that nobody's gonna use that and the construction's not gonna go out of that date.
Oh, here's this.
They're gonna do that and that road's not gonna take it. Because you take heavy equipment running up and down the road right now, just what these been already doing.
We've had concessions before.
So, that's a suggestion.
So it's a comment, yeah.
Thank you, your comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me just get the, all the comments.
The Aqua Fair, you're gonna put another 29 houses there and all of them are going to use wells. And I had an experience, the fact that when I bought the, the house, I'm at 300 feet as far as a well. So, what you get is you get a lot of silt and particularly, they built a couple houses on Sutton over across the line and all of a sudden, my silt went away. So I didn't have as much problem with the filters. If you put 29 houses in, I guarantee you're gonna have problems with your water with the existing people.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Thanks for the comment.
Good.
All right. Name and address, please.
Death Chase, 12 Belvoir Avenue. I just have some questions and some ideas and some thoughts. So, basically, can you give me an idea of what the pricing on the houses would be?
Undisclosed this time.
You don't know?
We don't.
Okay. And are the houses gonna all look alike? Are they going to be, you know, what's the flavor going to be in that neighborhood?
So, going back through Madam Chair, so going back to what I said previously, the architect that we brought on to the project, obviously it's very preliminary, we don't have a definitive plan even submitted yet.
Do we have a name of that architect?
Brett Tebow Architecture.
Brett Tebow?
Yes, he's out of Mende. He, he rejuvenates and revitalizes existing structures. So, we are looking to incorporate that type of thought process into the actual development itself. In regards to, will they look cookie cutter and exactly the same? No.
And I don't know who this gets addressed to, and maybe this isn't quite the forum, but the impact on services, fire, police, the schools, who kind of looks at that and makes a determination in those regards?
All, all those departments. All those departments look at that? Yeah. To the chair?
They all review it.
Okay. And I've heard one of the gentlemen talk about meeting with the Sutton Police Chief and the Sutton Fire Chief and the, and only the Assistant Fire Chief in Douglas. Are you, do you have plans to meet with those officials in Douglas?
Great question. For a point of concern, we did meet with the Douglas Fire Chief. In fact, it was in the meeting that you were involved with the Douglas Fire Chief and the Douglas Police Chief. It was at that point, and just, I'm gonna tell everybody now, we had different approaches for fire suppression between the two communities. The town of Sutton would like these, what they referred to as drop backs. So it's like a 20 by 20 or 20 by 30, basically almost like a pool. And they would fill it with water with their pumping trucks and then they would draw from that. Town of Douglas said, no, we want cisterns, okay? So when we had the discussion about cisterns, the question was raised, well, what about sprinklers? And so typically, when you talk sprinklers for homes.
Oh, my God.
Yep, so there you go. So they're, they cost it. But what we heard, when we got the email, that the discussion with the Deputy Fire Chief, was that she voiced a strong opinion about sprinklers. And I said to Tim, I said, you tell me what you, I know what I would do. He looked into it, he said, you know what? For the dollars and the headaches, we'll go with the sprinklers.
Instead of cistern?
No, no.
Or both?
Instead of cistern.
Instead of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I see what you mean.
Because they're gonna run off a well and a.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Anyone else? Yep.
I still have a list.
Okay, okay.
I know you're trying to wrap it up.
Yes.
You talked about phasing in the development. Typically, what would the timeline be? Would we be talking two years?
Honestly, the construction plan is not complete yet. It's been.
This is preliminary, that's the thing.
But these gentlemen are experienced and I'm sure they've done this before, so I'm sure they can give me an idea of the timeline.
Sure. I unfortunately, I, transparency is our goal and I am being honest with you, we don't know right now.
So we don't know how long our neighborhoods will be.
So what I, what I will say is that we are going to address it in the most time-effective manner and the most cost-effective manner and the most sensitive to our neighbors. The problem that we have in projecting forward is not that we're trying to, to not disclose anything. Given the current pandemic, everything is different. You can't load a job site like you used to be able to.
That's right.
So, so I can't get materials. There are, there are challenges that are outside of our control at this point. So for me to tell you two to five, five years, it's, I have, I truly don't know.
Again, through the chair, I think with respect to phasing, this is where that, that works out great. So rather than go through, and I'm not going to name the national developers that do this, there are several of them, but rather than just go through, drop the blades of the dozers and clear cut everything and leave everything, that's the difference. If you go in there and you properly phase it, I'm sure by the time we get to the Conservation Commission, if that didn't come up tonight, they'd be all over it. How are you phasing that? Typically, what we, what we like to do is, you know, phase it in, you know, in almost these little clusters so that it progresses. That would be the approach.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a suggestion that this is just a preliminary plan and.
Yeah.
The hour's getting late, we've got other business.
Yeah, so are we, what are, what would we like to do? Do we wanna review the waivers? You wanna have them on the next meeting? Do you wanna vote?
I got.
To move forward with modifications?
Whatever the board would like to do, but.
I got a quick question.
Yeah, okay.
Come later when they're definitive.
Okay.
Will we come into Forest Street, the width between the lot, lot line from the road is it? So where you come, right, on, on the green there? Yeah. Where you, where you, come on to Forest Street, what's the width?
About 60 feet, 60, 70 feet.
On each side?
60, 70 feet on this side up in here, probably close to 80 feet on the other side.
You know where we're at?
60 feet to my bounds.
Yep.
Like we're having on other driveway issues, a buffer zone where the road enters on the forest, is there gonna be a buffer on each side of the road?
Yeah.
That's a great question, Madam Chair. So as the planning board knows, and just for the abutters, I think that if I could, Madam Chair, I know the hour's getting late, but I just wanna.
Do you wanna continue this discussion to the next meeting, to the 14?
Just a question, because I'm never gonna remember it.
Okay.
Whenever you look at buffers, buffer zones, there are multiple buffer zones. There's a vertical and there's a horizontal vegetation buffer zone. In this particular case, while we're only 60 feet here, there's going to be a cut situation with earthwork in here. So you're not going to need to see these vehicles come up through here. You're gonna have the earth come over, and then it's gonna drop down to a grade in this area here. So you're gonna maintain this vegetation through this area here.
Okay, so shall we save the waiver requests for the next meeting?
How many ones are there?
Um.
28.
No, no, there's, I took one off. One, two, three, four, five. Five waivers. Trees, sidewalks, just on one side of the road.
Width.
The width of an issue was?
There's two, there's the width, pavement width.
So it's, we don't even need a motion, it's a meeting, so I could put them in at October 14th at 7:40?
Yep, sounds good.
I will be, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm gonna be visiting my son, who I haven't seen in six months.
Okay.
I'll be out in California. The next one after that?
The 28th?
28, I can do that.
Do you wanna be on at 7:10?
Yes, sure. Thank you.
Okay. So everyone in the audience has that date, the 28th, 7:10? If the first person cancels, we'll start early. 7:10. And then we will discuss the waivers, and what else? And you'll just take feedback.
Whatever, when we get a chance to review it and then what comes up.
Yeah, we can cut the meeting shorter if we wait to take questions when we do the.
Definitive.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll just do, we're just gonna do waivers, so there won't be any public comment for the next meeting. You can submit something in writing if you want us to look at it, though, since you know about it. So if there's any comments or questions, right, they can submit it to Jen.
Yep. But it's still.
Before the meeting, preferably.
Yeah, before the meeting, before October 28th.
48 hours.
But through the chair, tell the public that the definitive plan is gonna be applied for, it becomes a public hearing.
Yep.
Yep.
We know.
You guys, no, we know, but I just want you to know that this is just permanent. And then we really start afterwards.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item, public.
Well, Mike knows this, this, we're over the two hour mark.
Thank you.
We're over, we're over the two hour.
Nothing on that, so don't worry.
Okay, so that's not implemented yet. But so 8:00 PM, public hearing continuing, McIntyre Loam Inc., I'll entertain a motion to continue to October 14th, 2021, at 7:15 PM.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Jake made the motion, seconded by Aaron, all those in favor. Okay. 8:15 PM, public hearing, continue Flying Goose LLC, request for continue, it's October 14th, 2021, at 7:00?
30. I'll make.
Do we wanna do 7:30 or?
Check discovery before you make a time check.
Yeah, do you wanna do, yeah.
7:15?
There is a 7:15.
7:20?
If the two people continue again, you wanna do like 7:10 or 7:20?
7:20?
There's a reason for it, though.
But if Pine continues and McIntyre.
If she cancels out, we can also do things that are other than what's on the agenda, like we can.
Okay, so we'll just stick with 7:30.
Everybody's also kind of stuck, everything in 30 minutes here.
Jen, you can save all the.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to continue Flying Goose LLC to October 14th at 7:30 PM.
Motion made, seconded by Mike Z. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a ZBA application, is that somewhere? No. And then we sign the vouchers, meeting minutes looking good, we will review these, and I think we should adjourn, so.
Okay.
We do have one little, what?
We haven't got through the minutes, we just got them.
We also got a little letter on the planning board consent for that Oak special permit thing, and they are not, they no longer need it. They're not assigning their asset to AM, so they're keeping it. That was in our, in our file, so that was good. So you have the ZBA, well, they won't have, oh, they will? No, wait, what day is it? Yeah, 'cause they have their meeting.
In between ours.
Okay, everybody can, where's the, is the Mylar in here?
Yeah, that's correct. Mylar's in the bottom.
Okay.
You want me to lay it out over there?
Yeah.
And I don't think we need to review, oh, yeah, we do, probably, yeah.
Thank you. Just wait a second.
Oh.
What?
Oh, this is. Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
We gotta go over there.
Because it's the last one, the first one, and I can't, Northwest Maine is here.
Yeah, yeah, this is ours.
Okay. I'll send him an email tomorrow.
Well, Adam said he did, so I just wonder if he called up on it. Do you ever remember issuing anything?
I don't recall.
Um, well, I'll do. It's down almost to the line, but they.
Let me.
Your things, so that.
No, I have it, it's just Holland stamps. What line I gotta go on?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two more.
And there's new work going on?
What's that?
There's new work going on in there?
Yeah, I can't remember us issuing anything for Orange Street, which is a scenic road, for a driveway going in, and they've already taken down the trees, they busted through the stone wall and they've gone.
There's a house lot, there's a house that got sold.
Donatelli.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve Donatelli's.
Steve Donatelli.
Well, Orange Street, I couldn't remember if we, I asked him.
It was probably two years ago, I remember.
It was a long time ago.
I don't remember it.
Yeah, long time ago.
They have a, they have all of that there. I don't know if it's.
I don't know, I didn't go into the property. I was grading the road, so I went by it.
You see it all, everything from way up there.
Yeah. But I know they went through the wall, and the guy said he did go through all the permitting process. I just couldn't remember us approving, if it was two years ago, that's probably why I don't remember.
Yeah, I do recall it, every dollar to, but yeah, like two, three years ago.
Okay, glad to hear that.
I'm gonna leave this to Jen, she can reuse that for the next meeting.
She's coming back, because she.
We use what? No, we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because the meeting, I think, is before our next meeting.
Less to print.
It isn't easy. Take it off.
I have a splitting headache. I have a splitting headache.
They can't.
Who?
Well, it's a meeting.
Who? Those guys, what are they saying?
They're talking about planning board business. They probably shouldn't be doing.
Oh, hey, boys, we're not making any, we're not making, we're not doing any comments, right, over there?
Hey, I'm just gonna.
Yes?
It's, she might.
Let me see.
Like, I might know.
Yep.
Are there any? Glass?
We catch on the mailboxes, I normally get it, but you cut it this time.
I nearly told them, yes?
When I was here, when we signed, I always used to date them.
Yeah, I dated them. I dated them. Yeah, yeah. But you could do that for me, if I missed anything.
I think of Western Senate is a really big one.
Who wants to review this? This is a.
I'll review it, since Jake's gonna go stamp. Unless Mike, you want it?
Yeah.
I won't. You get the next one, then.
There's no sheet for us to sign.
You get the next one, how's that?
Um, if you wanna, Les will come in, he's here every day.
I live the closest.
Monday and sign, so that she didn't print out.
Not a problem. Yeah. Okay, Rosin Road, so.
Is that the existing house?
Yeah, the existing house.
Okay, here's a proposed one.
Thank you. I was trying to figure it out.
Sorry.
I'm missing something here. Okay. Oh, this is, okay, so this is, all right, so they've got this a little bit.
Just like the deck.
That's weird.
Squid lead and all that.
So the, all right, so it's.
I don't know, what are we doing?
Is it any more non-conforming?
Everyone, come back.
Yeah. So, Eve?
Yes.
Okay. So the existing house, and then they're proposing a deck. So it looks, it looks like this, this was the former house, in my eyes, is this dotted line, was the, unless that's the proposed house.
No, that's a setback line.
Oh, that's the, you've got a setback line, okay.
So they're already in the setback.
Yeah, but they're staying in the, inside the cookie, okay.
So the existing encroachments, are they becoming more non-conforming or holding the same lines?
They're roughly in, around the box, which is, which is consistent with the neighborhood and stuff like that. I think this, this one really helps out. So they're 15, 16 feet on the side setbacks, which is typical for that area, and they're 43 in the front, they'll never make 50, because the lot's a 100 by 100 and stuff like that.
Why is this 59, that's 15?
You wanna add a front porch, in the front setback, which they're already in the front setback, so they're just extending their non-conforming front setback.
I'm gonna pass this to you, Mike.
For a front porch?
Because.
Yeah, have Mike look.
They're not, they're not creating a new non-conformity, they're expanding existing non-conformity.
So I'm gonna recuse myself from that application, I just realized we did the plan, so.
You just realized what?
I'm.
From the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you guys wanna leave your minutes in your folders, I'll just put them for the next meeting, so we have to reprint them, unless you wanna go through them.
Oh, no, we'll, we bring them, yeah, and we bring them home and look at them.
If I was presenting, I'd love to do, but I don't care.
Really?
Hey, I did a lot of the heavy lifting before you got here, just to let you know. I was reviewing a lot of minutes.
So this is what they have. So what they're trying to do, everybody's installed a front porch, but they're not going beyond the front of the house.
Oh, okay.
So they're continuing the non.
So what they're doing is, they're just.
Well.
His existing house.
Some opinions.
They're not going beyond the front.
You are creating, you are creating an extension, and you are, so the non-conformity is extended.
Correct.
Is it, does it intensify the exist, beyond the existing non-conformity?
Roslin were.
No.
So board, what's our consensus on that?
I got no problem with the front.
Yeah, it's a planning board side, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so Mike, would you be able to comment and sign?
Yeah.
Jen, does she, Monday, no objection to the, it's a variance?
Yeah, I got no problem.
No objection, on behalf of the planning board?
You have a front page for it?
I'm sure it's a variance, it's not a special permit.
Pretty sure.
But then they'll have to prove the fact it's because of.
Or do you wanna, do you wanna learn in the spring by?
Well, size, configuration.
If you do it the right way.
Monday morning, I'm early.
If you do it the right way.
But they're already, they're already in the front setback, so if they're non-conforming.
It depends on what they applied for.
Yeah.
I know.
Do we all have to sign this?
It's an expansion on the existing non-conforming nature of the structure, on a non-conforming lot.
I don't know what it is in Douglas. Most communities that I've worked in, that's a special permit, not a variance.
Correct, but it's what they signed up for. What did they sign up for?
It's confusing.
What does it say?
I'm looking right now, I'm looking right now.
Eve, we're on the same page, but it gets, it's really weird the way it's written.
The, the standards are different if it's a special permit and then.
Big difference.
Yeah, than a variance.
Correct.
Yes, two different things.
Yes, so they.
Special permit's special for use.
Okay.
We don't do it.
We're good?
Yeah.
What do they apply for?